Which stands one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Can we get Harvey up big on the screen? Switch then. Bring you up Harvey.
I see everyone.
We, we, one of the things we wanted to do a couple of meetings ago, we, uh, we voted, I believe Harvey is the first trustee emeritus. I, I can't remember any others at the college that, that we have designated. So trustee Nutter was a, uh, is the longest, I believe, serving trustee at the college, starting in nineteen ninety-six and going through twenty twenty-four. I don't think I, I can possibly, uh, do justice to what Harvey has meant to this college over the years. He, uh, he's, he was involved basically in everything. I, I can't say enough, uh, he, he got involved in with the Council of County Colleges. He got involved with everything. I, I, I got to know Harvey in, uh, the early nineties. He always had a seat on his Board of Trustees for the OIC, which went to the college and I was asked, I think in nineteen ninety-two to join Harvey's OIC Board. So I got to know Harvey really well back then. And, uh, we did a lot of great things together throughout the years and, uh, you know, I always say when they write the history of this college, uh, Harvey is gonna be, he's gonna have a chapter of all his own, uh, because he just has been a, a huge part of this place and, and he was, you know, longtime Chair of the Board. He is a friend to so many of us here and, uh, can't say enough good about Harvey. So we have a plaque here that will get to Harvey for, for what we have done and it's, it's got the college emblem on it and it says trustee emeritus awarded to Harvey J. Nutter in recognition of outstanding loyalty and dedication to the Passaic County Community College Board of Trustees nineteen ninety-six to twenty twenty-four.
Well, what?
And, and I think, and I think what's, what's truly admitting i- is that, uh, the person who has replaced Harvey on the board is no other than Kenneth Sumter, who is, obviously has a long history with Harvey as well. And I, I think it's just great and it's full, it's going full circle.
That's, that's, that's great.
Anyone else? Anyone else wanna?
Sorry, just thank you for all your service, um, your friendship, your loyalty, your, uh, wise advice, your guidance on how many trips together and just wish you all the best.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Harvey, uh, tell you, your shoes are very thick to fill and I've not even come close.
Okay. Well, it's been a pleasure being, uh, being a, a member of the board and, 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 and a great pleasure of being president uh, for all these years. I can't, and, and Steve, 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 Steven, Steven, Steve is a, you know, sometimes when you just can't say enough or, 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 or about, about people. Steve is, Steve is one of them. He's, 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 he's been a, uh, 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 I, 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 a, a good friend. And, and, uh, anything I've, I ever, uh, needed from the college, Steve, Steve was there for me. And I, 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 right now I'm, I'm just tongue tied. I just wanna thank everyone on the boards for, uh, having me as their president. Hello? Hello?
Harvey, we will put this plaque to you so you, you can display it proudly in your home.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on with our meeting.
Yep. Okay. The Open Public Meetings Act notice.
And you're welcome to say Harvey, but you don't have to. You've done your time. All right. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act notice that this meeting was given in the annual meeting notice, which was submitted to the Bergen Record Herald News mail, uh, emailed to the office of the county clerk and posted on PCCC website and bulletin boards on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. Okay, roll call.
Alumni Rep Buchanan.
Here.
Trustee Apter. Trustee Drakeford. Trustee Glovin. Trustee Deo Dine.
Present.
Trustee Moody.
Present.
Trustee Poe.
Present.
Trustee Ramirez.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Sumter.
Present.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Present.
Chairman Marco.
Present. Thank you. Okay, resolution number one, consideration of the minutes of the Board of Trustees, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Uh, are there any corrections to the minutes?
Moving.
You're done? Move it? Second, Vice Chair Tanis. Okay, then roll.
Trustee Deo Dine.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Poe. Trustee Ramirez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Sumter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Yes.
Chairman Marco.
So we will go right into, uh, where we, where we, where we're in Passaic. As most of you know, this is our healthcare campus where we teach most of our healthcare programs. And we always ask Dr. Kadevi when we're here to give a little update on what's going on in healthcare and, uh, directions we're going. So Jackie, we turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to talk about, uh, healthcare programs and update. Basically, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we have now and what we hope to have in the future. Okay, so this is the healthcare campus we're here and this is what we have here. Um, I'm going to talk first about the credit, for credit healthcare programs and then, uh, go into the specific ones we have here on campus. As you all know, we have a nursing education program here that educates our end. Uh, it's an applied science program. We have seven hundred majors right now. Uh, we have, um, a program that takes in about fifty-five in September, about thirty in January. Uh, we, th- this program leads to licensure, okay? And it is also, uh, requires specialized accreditation so that we have two groups looking over our shoulder, the state of New Jersey and ACEN, which is a specialized crediting agency for nurses. So, um, I al- I'm gonna be here, uh, pointing out, uh, those two items too, if you go along because they actually require more time and more staff, uh, to, uh, run those kinds of programs. Okay, so that's nursing. We also have radiography, soon to move here when the new building is built. Uh, we will have radiography here on campus. This is another applied science program, have to have a degree. Uh, there are two hundred thirty-three majors in the, uh, radiography program. They take around thirty every fall. Uh, and this is a program that students need to be certified first and then licensed. So they have to show certification before they can stand for licensure. And this also requires a specialized accreditor. Surgical tech, we just, uh, opened the surgical tech program. We're really proud of it. Uh, we're getting more and more majors. We're actually getting some crossovers from nursing, uh, that want, that decided they were in nursing, maybe they wanted to try surgical tech. Um, so that's, that's good for us also. Uh, they require certification. There's no licensure uh, in the state of New Jersey for surgical techs, which means actually they can move around a lot, uh, a lot better into different states. Uh, but there is a specialized accreditor and we just had our initial accreditation and we came, uh, through it quite well. Uh, we also have the medical assistant program, which is thirty credits. We have a hundred and thirty-seven majors. Uh, this requires certification. There's no licensure, but there is a specialized accreditor that comes in and we do have that accreditation. We also have a dialysis technology program, which is a certificate program. We have about twenty, uh, we have, um, twenty-four majors. We were just talking at dinner about this program. Many students that are waiting to get into nursing go into the, uh, dialysis technology program because it really gives you a heads up when you're looking for a job as a nurse. You can, uh, go into the ICU units and do the acute dialysis. So it's really a good thing. Okay, future. What are we looking for in the future? We're looking at diagnostic metal, medical, uh, sonography, which I'm going to talk to you about in greater detail later on at the program. We have a proposal for you to approve for us so that we can go ahead and, uh, and, and have that program here. Uh, um, when the, well, actually what we plan to do, and you'll hear more from me when we get to the, uh, ultrasound proposal, but, uh, we can go ahead with this program before the building is built here. Uh, so we'll talk a little bit about that later. Uh, that also is an, uh, applied science degree. Uh, there, again, there's a certification, but no licensure in the state of New Jersey. There is a specialized accreditor and more to come in tonight's presentation. Uh, the other is dental hygiene. Uh, dental hygiene is an applied science program where, uh, the students do have to be licensed by the state of New Jersey. And there's also a specialized accreditor, uh, for that program. Uh, we are, um, uh, planning on, uh, speaking to a consultant on Thursday. Uh, we, we have some plans for this new building and we're gonna have the consultant look at the plans to see if we're on the right track. If not, um, we're, we're moving forward with the ultrasound because I feel the ultrasound can be located in a different, on a different campus until this building is built. It doesn't require a lot of specialized, uh, uh, space. It requires just an open room with a quick. So, uh, I think it would be wise if we started the ultrasound program, get it started and then we'll just move ultrasound here when the room, when the, uh, when the space is available. I also put in some, um, the non-credit healthcare programs that we have, uh, the General Albert runs, and I thought I'd mention these, um, emergency medical tech, EMT, uh, phlebotomy, EKG, uh, patient care technician and the imaging academy. Just to say a couple of things, EMT, um, is, um, um, you know, a program where the students get certified. Once they're certified, they can actually take, uh, six, I think in six or seven credits and use them in the bio-science program. So it's much what we call credit for fire learning. And we can also do that with phlebotomy. They take the phlebotomy course for non-credit and then we can give them college credit for the medical assistant program. And that is, uh, where we are.
And for, for those who don't know, the new building will be right out here.
Right.
It's, uh, proven to be more complicated than, as most things are in terms of getting the building built. But you, as, as you know, we have a good track record. It, it may take a little longer, but we can get it built. So there will be parking underneath the building. So it'll start on this floor. You know, the first floor of that building to be level with this floor and then go up another floor on top of that. So that will house our dental hygiene and a couple of our other health science programs. All right, so we're gonna move on to Brad Morton, who is, uh, giving, giving an annual, uh, update to the board on what truly is an incredibly important topic and some of you will find it interesting on cy- cybersecurity.
Even you.
Yeah.
Right. Good afternoon, everyone. Hello. So as Dr. Rose mentioned, uh, this is an annual update. Uh, it's required as part of the Grand League of Act for us to, to give the Board of Trustees this update every year. Um, our hope of this update is to really give you an understanding of, you know, the current cybersecurity threats that the college faces, what we're doing to mitigate those, those threats and those risks. And also to give you an update on, you know, some of the accomplishments with, or improvements we've made over the last, you know, twelve months uh, in our information security program. Joining me tonight is, uh, Dr. Dawn Dunkley. She's, she's on Zoom. Um, Dawn is our virtual chief information security officer. So she works with us in a part-time capacity. Uh, she has a doctorate in cybersecurity. She has extensive experience working in, uh, government, military, public and private sectors. So, um, she's been around the block a few times and, uh, helps a lot of institutions in New Jersey, also with their cybersecurity programs. So I'm gonna hand it over to Dawn for this first part of the presentation. Uh, go on.
Yeah.
I am, and it's a pleasure to be with you again. Uh, thank you so much for having me on board. Um, if you wanna go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So one of the things that Brad just brought up is I work with, um, a lot of schools, not only in New Jersey, but in the region. Um, and so what we're seeing here that I want to kind of bring to your attention is that we are, uh, absolutely seeing higher educational institutions being targeted on a more frequent basis. So twenty twenty-three, which is the last year that we have really good numbers on, was the worst year on record for ransomware. Um, as you see there, uh, seventy-nine percent of higher ed institutions targeted. We've had our issues here in the past as well, but, um, the, the good news is that we put a lot of measures into place that, uh, Brett is gonna talk about, of course. But we saw a seventy percent across the board increase in higher education attacks writ large. Um, average recovery time, uh, uh, is gonna be about twelve point six days. That's just to get kind of back up and running. The, the actual, uh, getting back to a hundred percent can take sometimes months plus to really recover from these situations. And I wanna make that point because that really brings to bear that final number there, the one million plus cost per incident. You know, we have insurance, we have, uh, things in place there, but, uh, you know, just assuming that we're not going to pay the, the ransom, which, um, is actually at, in our case, uh, not legal, although we do see some schools that still, still do it for sure. But, um, you know, it's, it's the insurance cost and it's a personnel cost for overtime and it's the replacement cost for, um, for the, um, you know, systems that might have to be replaced. But it's also very much a, a cost of reputation, a cost of goodwill. So, um, even today, I, I have to tell you, um, uh, went to go file my taxes. Just a quick anecdote that I had to tell everybody. Went to go file my taxes and the accountant called, uh, and said, we tried to e-file your, um, your taxes and they were rejected because my son, seventeen-year-old high school junior, uh, my son's, uh, identity apparently was stolen. And, uh, we, uh, his ta- taxes had already been filed with him online.
Yes.
So it, it's ha- it's happening. It's happening even to me. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here telling you this just because, I mean, it happens to the best of us. Um, so that's gonna cause, um, as we're digging into it today, it's gonna cause a lifelong, um, problem for my son because someone stole his information. He was involved in a, uh, a breach, I know, from a K-12, uh, student information system, uh, earlier this year. And, and I suspect that might actually be what that's all about. So, so I say all that to say, it's a, it's not only a, a cost of, uh, of recovery, but it's also a cost in reputation and goodwill. Uh, next slide, please. All right, so, uh, phishing campaigns still, um, and, and everybody loves, uh, to, to get a good dose of training every year at least, but uh, the reason that we do the training that we do and the phishing tests that we do and the things that we do are because, um, the human element is still so incredibly important. So we are still seeing widespread phishing campaigns uh, across the schools that I work with in New Jersey. Uh, see a lot that are tied to, um, people who are trying to say, hey, I've got this job for students, you know, click this link and then we wanna, we want to, uh, to, uh, give you a job. Um, we're seeing things like, um, phone calls being put into different departments within the colleges and universities. Hey, um, just wanna, wanna, um, validate, uh, my information. Um, you know, I got your information off of the public website. Um, you know, I need to have my password reset. I need to have my multi-factor authentication reset. And we have, um, very much an, an openness in academia that I believe is being abused. So attackers are abusing that trust and openness that we have in academia, uh, creating, some of my schools have had fake login pages created uh, and they're trying to send people to their, the websites to, uh, to click on things they ought not to. Um, so we're seeing a lot of, a lot of activity going on in that space that I do believe, um, and we're still seeing a lot of, of ransomware as well. So, um, the, the big thing that I wanna point out there is that, um, most of the, 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 uh, threat actors that are, um, conducting these ransomware attacks are going in months, weeks and sometimes months ahead of time and stealing the data and extorting before they even start talking about the ransomware. So by the time we get a ransomware note at this point in time, uh, they're long gone with the data, um, sadly. And, and like I said, I'm pretty sure that's what happened to my son and power school in case anybody, um, uh, has a kid in high school. You might have been involved in that as well, even if you don't know it. Um, so some major breaches there. I won't, uh, belabor them, but you'll see their, uh, fake payroll emails. Um, you know, especially when they get the college president or they get the provost or they get whoever is running the business out of, uh, things. Uh, they love to, threat actors love to exploit the concepts of urgency and power to, uh, to get things pushed through. So you'll see, you know, oh my gosh, we have to push this, uh, particular invoice through. We're late. Got to do it right now. Um, and so, you know, just be aware of that as well. And you'll see there, um, the third-party risks, um, the move-it breach that happened last year is possibly one of the most impactful ones that we've seen in, in, uh, higher education, uh, to my knowledge ever. So move it. A transfer mechanism that works behind the scenes in a lot of, a lot of, um, you know, learning management systems, a lot of, uh, the state of New Jersey uses it on the backend to move, uh, records around. I do know that. Uh, they were compromised. And so what that means is that the information that, um, that was being you, you moved through that file transfer mechanism, uh, was compromised. And the sad thing about it is if you don't know your third and sometimes fourth-party vendors, then you have a really tough time, um, walking through kind of what, what your data is at risk because you, uh, you didn't even know that you were at risk of that. So we're doing a, a lot of work in that space to really keep a, a top eye on that as well. So go ahead to the next slide. Um, so I wanna give Brad plenty of time to talk about, uh, what we're doing from that, uh, from that perspective. But we, we have to say on top of, um, from, from a inventory perspective, when we ask, uh, people to let us know that, you know, keep us in the loop, make sure that we're, um, we're engaged and involved in when you wanna stand a new system up, um. A lot of that does end up being, uh, vulnerabilities that we don't necessarily know about. And sometimes that ends up being unpatched systems. So we have to stay on top of what is the newest, the latest and the greatest. Legacy system, systems are a, a real problem as well. So the older things get, sometimes they get end of life, sometimes they're out of date. Um, and then again, you can't patch them. So it's a, it's a real problem and, and trying to protect them and sort of, um, sector them off. Social engineering, like I said, both phishing and through, uh, we're seeing a lot of phone things again. So staying aware, making sure people, uh, understand that those things, um, you know, trust but verify. Um, emerging threats. So we are seeing, I've seen personally some QR codes, um, being used in different attacks against the colleges and universities in, uh, in New Jersey. I also am very concerned about, um, deepfakes. So what does that mean? Um, you know, let's say and, and the technology is already starting to emerge where, um, you, you get a, you know, a video of me doing this and then you can actually create a, a fake video of me. Um, so even if we start doing something like, um, have a Zoom call to verify who you are, you know, I wanna get my password reset. I need to get my multi-factor reset. Um, you know, we have, uh, the possibility of that being fake video. And then, of course, a lot of, uh, admission and financial aid fraud. Uh, seeing a lot of that as well, um, fake, uh, admission, uh, admissions being put through for people to be able to, to commit financial aid fraud. Um, and that, that is quite prevalent as well. Um, there are some, you know, some IT things that can be put in place, but a lot of that, quite frankly, is a partnership between, uh, us and, uh, different parts of the, the college to, uh, to be able to work together to try to tamp that down. So, um, I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yes.
Yeah, Financial Aid Board is really concerning. I mean, that's, that's something that's, uh, kind of running rampant in New Jersey, probably elsewhere as well, I'm assuming. Um, people steal real identities and they use them to register for classes. They, they basically steal financial aid dollars. Um, sometimes they even show up to class first of the day. Um, so it's, it's, it's a real problem and institutions are really struggling with strategies to, to mitigate that. Um, thankfully it hasn't been too much of a problem for us. Um,
But we've had it.
We've had it. We've experienced it. We've heard those meetings, like what do we do? You know, what are, what technologies can we put in place to kind of pair it up, take applications? Uh, but it's, it's just a lot of work to build it up those, those needs. So what are we doing to, you know, mitigate, um, a lot of those threats? Um, just got a couple of high-level items here. The first of almost is we have adopted a zero-trust model. So we basically don't trust anyone, um, to start with. And then as they identify themselves, um, maybe they're in certain security groups because they need access to applications, we, we basically, um, slowly grant access. So we, we limit access to the minimum needed to do the job, to access the information that they need. Um, MFA, which is multi-factor authentication and access controls. Um, this is really the bread and butter of, uh, a lot of our security. Um, you know, with all those phishing emails that go out and they, they, they kind of lure you into enter your credentials to do something. You know, those credentials are easy to steal. So, you know, we, we don't want to limit, um, we don't want to allow access to us just using the usernames and passwords because it's easy to steal those and then they can gain access to even more sensitive information. So we implemented multi-factor authentication, um, which requires, you know, something that you have, you probably will use it when you log into your banking site or whatever. You get a text to your phone and you have to enter that in. That's, that's multi-factor authentication. And access controls are, um, basically things we put in place to say, okay, you can't access, you know, the student information system unless you're connecting from a college-owned device. You know, you're, you're in New Jersey, um, and you're in the security group and you've gone through security monitoring, right? So we have all these controls in place to limit access. Um, password protect, um, really, uh, if there are vulnerabilities to software from vendors, the only thing you can do is apply security updates when they're released. Uh, but we wanna do it in a timely manner to, to, to reduce that risk. Uh, so we, we have a schedule that we, we do those, both ISOs and IRL regular endpoint computers. And when there's an emergency release of an update, And when there's an emergency release of an update, maybe there's like a zero, what they call a zero-day exploit where. All of a sudden, hey, we've got this problem with CrowdStrike or whatever, some other product. Uh, and we have to immediately uh install this patch in our systems. We, we have procedures to accommodate that as well. So we don't have to wait for our monthly or bi-week, whatever it is, update. Training and awareness, this, this is one of the biggest ones, uh, as Dawn mentioned, um. There are so many schemes and scams, right, to, to get information out of people. Um. Chris was telling me of a, a podcast that he listened to where people would actually show up to interviews for jobs. At organizations to ask security questions, like, oh, what kind of firewall do you have? What kind of security systems do you use? You know, are you actually familiar with that? As, you know, just to mine that information and then they don't use that to break into the place, right? So social engineering is a real problem. So we've got to train people to be aware. Of what they should and should not share to people, like if you call into the registration office, say, hey, I want to validate my address or, or do this. Um, with Stevens, I'm sure familiar with red flags rules, right? Um, we've got to train our staff to really identify these risks and then know what's going on and be alert when they see something suspicious. Um, we actually don't allow people to access our systems that have sensitive data unless they've done that training. Um, and we also just recently started um. An employee onboarding program in IT. So if you're a new employee coming in, uh, in addition to all the other typical things we deal with setting up their laptops and everything else. We, we have them go through the training as well. Last but not least, um, you know, all these one through four, they're all preventative, right? Uh, trying to reduce the risk of something bad happening. Um, but inevitably something bad does happen, and that's why we have number five, which is offline backups. Um, we have local backups, offsite backups, cloud backups. Uh, we've got immutable backups like read-only. So if you get hit with ransomware or encrypts all your servers and all your data, you don't want to back up that encrypted information over your with backups. So we have read-only ones that you can't change. Once it's, once it's backed up, it's good. Um, so even if we do get hit with ransomware, we have clean data that we can restore from. So those are our mitigation strategies. Um, some of those have been in place for quite a while. Some of them are are more recent. Um, and we're constantly improving them um every week. So I just want to spend some time to go over some highlights of accomplishments over the last twelve, twelve months or so. Um, first, we have our Security Operations Center, uh, which is basically a service we subscribe to where we send them all the activity on all of our systems. Um, and they, they use technologies to, to look through that data um programmatically. To identify suspicious activity or, you know, different patterns of behavior that are not normal, like anomalous activity. And then they, they investigate that and they give us a call saying, hey, something's going on. You want to investigate this. Um, and that's, that's been quite successful, um, even to the point of um where we've gotten a call because. A, a student in a computer lab was trying to escalate to administrative privileges to something. And uh, we were able to handle that, reach out to the faculty members, say, hey, is this something you noticed by the class or, you know, uh, what's going on here? And we were able to, you know, kind of briefly handle that, excuse the faculty members. Um, but we, we get those calls, right? Um, we see what's going on and we're able to um, to take action. Uh, we've had our uh information security program, which Dawn, Dawn really helped us uh establish about three years ago. And, you know, sometimes when you're working with something for a long time, it's, it's really helpful to get a fresh set of eyes to look at it, to, to highlight any deficiencies that maybe you've decided to look because you've looked at it for so long. Um, so she recommended that we have an external party come in and board at our information security program. So we had that done and the results were very favorable. There were some findings for us to follow up on. Um, and, and we're doing that. Uh, nothing, nothing too significant, uh, more, more about documenting some of our procedures and processes. Removal of unsupported software, uh, we basically removed all unsupported Windows operating systems over the last year. Um. Not, not too flashy, but it's, it's an important step. Oh, four, we, we migrated our single sign-on services. So, you know, when you go to log into applications. Get your username and password, we have the service where you only need to request and then it can access all your applications. Um, we moved that up to a Microsoft service, which gives us far more control. So now we can say. You're connecting from, you know, this, this country, you cannot get in. Connecting from that state, you can get in. Uh, if you're using a college-owned computer, it's between these hours. You know, we've got really fine-grained control uh over, you can access what applications you want. And if it detects anomalous activity, like, hey, you know, Mike is suddenly connecting in from Estonia or somewhere. Uh, it'll say, hey, this is unusual travel. Um, so that would be can't get in, um.
Canceling vacation to Estonia.
No, I just want to work. And last but not least, uh, email security, um, Dawn mentioned, you know, just. The ever-increasing phishing emails we get and with AI, uh, and it's, it's getting even harder to detect the, the, the real from the fake. Um, you know, we saw one earlier today, it had our logo on it, it was from United Nations, about some, some opportunity. Um, it's, it's really, it's really hard to, to catch a lot of these things. Um, but in our email security system. We have implemented some extra controls over he-people, like Dr. Rose is configured in there. May not know this, but he's configured in there. So if someone tries to send or impersonate. Him by sending an email saying it's from him, maybe it's from a Gmail account, uses his name, uses his signature, it detects that, flags it, use it to junk. Um, so we, we have, you know, all of our vice presidents.
And we had, and we had that.
We have had that. Like, hey, I'm in a meeting, you know, can you quickly go and buy some gift cards, right? Alright, so we're getting close to the end. The end is in sight. Um, so I just want to give you. Um, actually, I didn't even look at my notes, so I missed the YouTube. But one thing I do want to mention is the security awareness training. Um, I've got some numbers here for the results. So it is actually having a significant impact. So to test the training, we, we send out a fake email to the campus community to see who gets, you know. Fooled by it. And we track all the statistics. So there, there, there are three layers to that. There is. Did the person, did the employee open it, begin with? Um, uh, did they click on the link within the email? And then the first step is did they provide their credentials, right? Did they give their username and password there? So we've got some good numbers. So in twenty twenty-three, so we sent this to, you know, over a thousand employees. We started doing this for students too, but I've just had the employee numbers. So in twenty twenty-three, four hundred and seventy-seven employees opened the email. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, it was four hundred and nine, so that's an improvement. In twenty twenty-three, a hundred and sixty-eight employees clicked on the malicious link. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, only forty-one employees clicked on it. And the most important one is, uh, in twenty twenty-three, ninety-one employees supplied their login credentials. In twenty twenty-four, only thirty, right? So it's a three-time, a three-fold improvement. And that's, that's through the security awareness training and, and other initiatives. We have, you know, cybersecurity on and off, so we send that information in as well. Um, so it's working. Um. Now, I should also say that in the last year, we haven't had any significant security incidents. I guess that's the most important. I guess the most serious incident we've had is someone's given out their credentials and we see that very quickly. And, you know, we have procedures in place to, you know, lock their access, you know, reset everything for them. We go through and check. For, you know, rules in their outlook, which automatically delete emails from us, you know, there's a lot of different steps now, but we have, you know, pretty solid procedures around that and it works pretty well. Um, last but not least, we, actually two things. One, our cyber insurance has gone down. I'd, I'd like to think that's because of our. Our improvements in our security. Um, so that's on validation there. And we're also tracked by BitSide, which is an external service. It's almost like, you know, Experian for your credit score except for security. Um, we have a seven hundred and sixty sec- uh, security score out of a, I think eight hundred and fifty is the highest. Uh, but we're in the top like five or ten percent. Um. The average score in the industry is six hundred and seventy, so we're, we're well above that. So we're tracking pretty well. Um, and that's improving every year. So that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, uh, Dawn and I would be happy.
One general question, uh, I'm a little disgusted, you're asking about the insurance. Does that cover that cover the total?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we had to use it once, so we can actually give you a, but I, you're probably best at taking that.
So, um, insurance covered uh several different areas. One was to uh deal with the problem. Um, so there was a team that they have on-site firm that worked with Brad and his team to work on our system.
Twenty-four seven, right?
They had, then they had a whole separate team that negotiated with the. The hostage taker, if you will. Um, they supplied us with an outside law firm. That helped quarterback all of this. Um, and when it came time to send out the required legal notices. To prepare them and get them sent out, to coordinate the offer of, of uh identity protection. For a year. Um, getting back to the notifications that we sent out to public. Uh, each state has different requirements. So if, if we have somebody that. Was in our system and now lives in Indiana, we have to follow Indiana's rules. They now live in North Carolina, we have to follow North Carolina's rules. And they did all that. Um, so, um. It was very, very helpful. It's something that I'm so glad we had. Which we learned from the first time we had it intact, it didn't do any harm. It was actually a student who was trying to see if we could hack it. Not for any malicious purpose apparently, just to do it. We didn't have insurance then.
And he actually wanted a job with us. He wanted to prove that, that he was able to hack in our system. He thought we'd hire him. Instead, he was visited by the FBI.
State police.
State police.
Um, actually, there was a charge. But, but as a result of that, we got insurance. Um, and uh, they were very helpful. Brad, if I talk more in detail, this is what they helped with. But, um, from my perspective, once I talked to the attorney firm that was, that we hired through the insurance company, paid by the insurance company. I realized they knew what to do. They were able to keep reassuring me and the rest of the people in the administration. Uh, just what they're doing. And out of that spawned a lot of, I think, what we see here now, that Brad, Dawn talked about.
After about three weeks, we backed them seven days. We, uh, every day, we, we spent about an hour with the lawyer, son of a mo.
It was excellent. It was, it was well worth it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Dawn, Dawn. Alright, uh, well, we're here in the same, so I want to give Patty DeRosa a chance to just, uh, I, I think you all know Patty, who runs this campus, I.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming by. Just give you some little highlights about this campus. Um. By the end of the semester, we're hopefully having our wellness center open. That will be located at PAC, um, the first floor, one, one eighteen, and that is a collaboration with, uh, the wellness center in the main campus. So that will be giving our students from different backgrounds and opportunity of, um, pantry services, uh. Social services, relationships, uh, and, and what they need. Um, it could be from housing, food stamps, to, um, getting some psychological assistance outside. So we're grateful that that opportunity has come. Dean Johnson is steering heading that. That, um, chat, that, uh, great opportunity for our student. But thank you very much for coming by and, um, I'll be around if you need anything.
Thank you. I also wanted to, uh, bring up that our foundation gala is Wednesday, April thirtieth. This year up on our Waddington campus, uh, we are going to be honoring two very special honorries, but, uh. Chairman John Curry is, is going to be our honoring. We're very pleased that he is agreed, uh, to allow us to honor him. This year. And Schneider Lightre, you know, who has become a fast friend of the college, they're once. Who are leading the, our energy savings improvement plan at the college. So, uh, we're really looking forward to this. We hope many of you can be there that night. It should be a great, uh, great evening. And of course, the whole purpose of it is to get scholarships for our students. That's what I'm doing with this, no other reason.
Yeah, one, uh, year, or I think it was one year or two years before, I'm trying to remember. Two years, um, the board's got a full-page ad, so the board is so inclined, uh, I'll send an email out and, um. Think what we're talking about is fifty-five dollars a board member. Fifty-five dollars a board member.
Right, on, on the discussion agenda tonight, you heard Jackie talk earlier about the new program in diagnostic medical sonography. So we'll let Jackie give you a little about that and also our new certificate of achievement in digital animation.
You see that person?
Diagnostic medical sonography. Ultrasound.
Ultrasound.
Take it easy.
Hopefully, I'm talking to you about two programs tonight. The first is the AAS. Uh, the first is the, um, associated applied science and diagnostic med- uh, medical, uh, sonography. I need the approval of the board in order to send this up to the state. Um, after it leaves the college, it will go to every president of every college and university in New Jersey. And they have an opportunity to, uh, to, uh, accommodate. And then it will go to the state to give the approval. Uh, so it's April and I'm not quite sure when all of this is going to get approved because we're running into the summer, but I wanted to get it out. Uh, so, and the second is we're going to look at the certificate of achievement in, in digital animation, which of course is not particularly assigned here. Uh, but I would also like to get that out to the state. Okay, so, uh, the new proposal on diagnostic medical s- uh, sonography or AKA ultrasound. Uh, probably all of you have heard about ultrasound and what a great diagnostic tool it is because it's non-invasive. We always tell, uh, some students who think they want to be nurses, but they don't like blood. Maybe ultrasound is a good field for them. Uh, it's a sixty-six credit program. And basically, um, the college-level courses designed to graduate students for employment and as certified. A sonographers, ultra, or ultrasound technicians, they will be employed in hospitals, ambulatory centers, and doctors, doctors. They're actually all over. I'm sure there's not anyone here who hasn't maybe had an ultrasound at one point. Um, and again, very non-invasive. And I, and I think it has a, um, it, it, it has great diagnostic properties now. But I think in the future, it even has greater, there'll be greater opportunities. I just actually read. A potential research study from the University of Michigan about how they're using sound waves to treat primary liver cancers. So I think it's really in the future going to be even more important to us in the healthcare industry. Um, again, we, it needs to be an accredited program. It's accredited by the Commission on Accreditation of Allied Health Education. And so we will have to have them in here for the initial accreditation. Um, and we will seek that to make our graduates eligible for the national registry and also to be able to take the certification exam. Remember, I think I told you in the, uh, the last presentation, they, they don't have to be licensed, but they do have to be certified to get a job. Uh, the credit load, uh, will exceed what, uh, the New Jersey statute says. Uh, but an exception will probably be made because it's a healthcare program. The requirement at the state is you can't go below sixty credits. This is sixty-six. Probably it will be approved if it's health, it's a healthcare program.
Jackie, why is that? Why do, why the extra six?
Uh, well, because they do a lot missing the curriculum, they do a lot of, of, of field work. Uh, these are the program outcomes, and we always use these to guide the curriculum. Um, and you can, uh, you know, read their, their basic, uh, the history of, uh, ultrasound, addressing patient needs. Uh, in diagnostic imaging process, uh, appropriate, uh, procedures and recordings of anatomy. Pathological and or physiological data for interpretation by a physician. Ethical and professional values and effective communication techniques. This is the curriculum. And so this is why, um, you know, you need to go higher. Uh, and all associate and applied science programs, uh, have about twenty general ed credits. So you could see that up in the box, the, the red box. But then in the major requirements, in something like ultrasound, you're looking. But then in the major requirements, in something like ultrasound, you're looking at, number one, you start out with fundamentals, okay? Fundamentals are one oh one, one ten, one twenty, one twenty-five, and then you get into specifics. Uh so we want to give them experience in abdominal ultrasound, um OBGYN, and OBGYN is a big user of ultrasound. Uh pediatrics, uh I don't know how many of um of our students actually do pediatrics, but they have to have that experience. Uh vascular, we all know that, that's probably uh where most of us have had our experience. And then they must go into the clinical area, and you can see where the credit alignment or allotment in the clinical courses is high. Okay, in the second and third ul- ultrasound clinical, they have to get eight credits, and that's where you're getting uh the increase in credits and then there's a capstone. So they spend a lot of time in a hospital or in another healthcare facility, and I want to say one other thing, this tends to be a little bit cheap. And so healthcare programs are expensive, but we don't have to send faculty. Any part, uh they are accepted by the hospital or the health. Yeah, I I just had some personal experience, I just had a echo, and I had three students in my room in addition to the precept, so uh interesting. Uh okay, let's see what else. Uh so again, generally, the reason why we want to create this program is there's a significant demand in the Southern County, North Jersey region. And that outpaces the national exam, there's no state licensure, as I said, so they can, once they're credentialed, they can move to any uh place, uh any place they want to. And um if they're not accepted in nursing or radiography, maybe they could get into the ultrasound program. And I do want to say one other thing, when I was having my own, uh I guess I had an echo, um I was talking to the students and most of them were in proprietary schools. And so if we can.
For profit schools.
Right, and that I'm sure that they were paying a lot for their education, so I think this is a real opportunity to save uh county students that want to become ultrasound techs. Okay, uh so my plan is to start offering the program twenty twenty-six. You have to see when you get the program back from the state is approved, and we also have to hire a director of ultrasound. So those two things would have to happen in the fall, okay? Hopefully, we can get it going in January, but no promises here. And also, uh this program would be eligible for Perkins grant funding because it's a lower work program, so we can get something out of out of Perkins. Uh and that will cover maybe some salary costs. That's it, uh okay, and then this program uh is not a healthcare program, but it's a fifteen-credit certificate of achievement in digital animation. Which um has, this has been something that the students wanted, uh it's a, it's a beginning start, it's a start. Um it's it's not, well, we're not uh educating and coming out with the uh very um. Very sophisticated people in this area, but it's a fifteen-credit, it covers uh basic principles in animation. Uh they will use commonly available software, and again, it's a, it's a beginning, it's a beginning career move for students. These are the outcomes, uh gain proficiency in industry-standard animation tools, understand animation principles. Create portfolios, design and develop characters, and uh collaborate and program solve and create teams. Uh and these are the courses, fifteen credits. And uh, you know, and we'll see how it goes, if it's uh becomes a really a big program, we might want to look for a degree, maybe a thirty-credit certificate. Uh and again, I think this is pretty much, the students actually have expressed a desire for these skills, and that's why we're going into the program. And it's really not going to cost us anything, uh we have a staff and we're going to begin it in the fall of twenty-five. This gets sent to the state as an FYI, uh you know, they're, it's, they don't go into the same, uh you know.
Level of scrutiny.
Level of scrutiny, right, so uh well, I'm sure we'll get this done and out by fall of twenty twenty-five. That's it, any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, so in addition, uh we have purchases of goods and services, have any answering questions about any of those programs? And uh I think that's where we are.
Send resolution. New degree program, AAS, diagnostic medical sonography. Uh new certificate of achievement, digital animation. Purchase of goods and services and personnel items.
That'll be your next curate.
My next curate, yes, digital animation. Okay, uh we have a motion to adopt resolution number three to consent resolution items, a set port in the memorandum dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Trustee Diogenes, yes, trustee Woody. Trustee Paul, yes, trustee Ramirez.
Yes.
Trustee Sumter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannis, yes, Chairman Marko.
Yes. Okay.
Resolution four.
Four.
So we we, so one of, one of our trustees had a conflict that his boss was on, is an adjunct professor here, so he separated out.
So uh personnel item, adjunct, back to employment, spring twenty twenty-five. Okay, second.
Trustee Diogenes, yes, trustee Woody.
Yes.
Trustee Paul. Yes. Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair, I'm sorry, trustee Sumter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannis.
Yes.
Chairman Marko.
Yes.
Okay. Any remarks from the public? Any remarks from the trustees? None, okay, they have a motion to adjourn. Second. Second. Trustees. Okay, roll.
Trustee Diogenes, yes, trustee Paul, yeah. Trustee Woody.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Sumter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannis.
Yes.
Chairman Marko.
Yes.